Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting of December 9th to order. Would you all stand for the pledge allegiance?
Norma Garcia, who is our new Commissioner, who is just, this is her first evening tonight, so that's why she was a little bit shell shocked by that, but we'll get it next time. But Norma is representing Ward 1, which is Vince Armientos' warden, and so she is on, she's going to be on the commission until Vince is termed out. Madam Secretary, would you do roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Garcia?
Present.
Commissioner Rivera?
Present.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Here.
Chair McLaughlin?
Here.
Commissioner Kano?
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Chair, for the record, Commissioner Kano will not be attending tonight's meeting, and you do have quorum.
Thank you. Okay, what I would like to do is I'd like to review the process for the public hearing so that everybody knows what to expect. Staff will provide an oral report and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will be open, the applicant will make a presentation, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will then be called to speak. Individuals will be limited to three minutes. Designated speakers will be limited to 10 minutes. The applicant will be given an opportunity to respond to the comments made by the audience, and will be limited to five minutes. The public hearing will be closed. Discussion will then return to the commission with a formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments: please state your name and address strictly voluntarily, state whether you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement will include all pertinent facts within your knowledge, any gossip, emotion, repetition, a clear, concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. Public comments: at this time, we will take public comments for any non-agenda item. Please fill out a card if you have already, that's fine, at this point in time, Madam Secretary, we don't have any... Okay, so there are no public comments at this point for the consent, for the open for public comments, we're going to close public comments at this point in time and move to the consent calendar. I'd like to have a motion for the minutes of October 28th to be approved.
So moved.
Second? Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have four in favor, one absent, and one abstained. You were abstained?
Yes.
Okay. And next, I'd like to have a motion to excuse the absence of Angie Kano.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five zero. We'll move on to the business calendar.
Chair, I'm sorry, sir, can we approve the minutes of November 12th?
Sorry?
Approve the minutes of November 12th, we have two sets of minutes on the agenda today.
That's fine, thank you. So we have a motion to approve the minutes from November 12th?
Also moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstained?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four, yea, one absent, one abstained. Okay, moving to the business calendar. Will that move to the business calendar? The formal actions by the Planning Commission shall become effective after the 10-day appeal period unless the City Council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and the decision of the City Council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission must be filed with the Clerk of Council and a copy sent to the Planning Department within 10 days of the date of the commission's action. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Public hearings. Now's the time and place to consider item #1, Conditional Use Permit #2019-33, #2019-34, and #2019-35 for the project located at 1602 East First Street. Decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days of the interested individual. Does anybody in the Planning Commission have anything to disclose at this point in time on this item? No? Okay, Ally, it's yours.
Thank you, Chairman McLaughlin, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Up for review tonight is Conditional Use Permits 2019-33, 34, and 35 for the property located at 1602 East First Street. This project is known as The Place Banquet Hall. The proposal is to allow a full-service restaurant with ancillary banquet facility within an existing commercial building at the subject location. This project requires approval of three distinct conditional use permits: one to allow ancillary banquet operations, the other to allow on-premise sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits, and the last to allow operations beyond midnight until 1 o'clock in the morning. This image here shows the site. It's a building that's shared on the parcel with the Holiday Inn Express mid-rise building that was recently refurbished on First Street. The building for the banquet hall and restaurant is adjacent to First Street. At the front is site, in the middle is the hotel, and in the rear is a surface parking area. The surface parking area is shared also partly with the church and office buildings to the west of the site. The site is zoned general commercial and has a general commercial land use designation in the general plan. This site plan shows the site as it appears today. There's no new construction proposed on the exterior in terms of enlargements or changes to square footage. The project is basically to allow the restaurant and banquet hall to operate in the existing location. And these site photos, again, show the site as it appears today. This is the building fronting First Street, and it also shows the building from the rear parking area. This floor plan shows the proposed operations, what would be the restaurant configuration. So in the restaurant configuration, a portion of the building would be occupied. There'd be a dining room, kitchen, and restrooms, everything you'd find in a standard restaurant. And then on the days when the banquet hall would operate, the use would expand into the entire portion of the building, and that area is highlighted in the rose-colored portion of the slide. So since this project was last heard on November 12th by the Planning Commission, well, at that meeting, staff was able to answer questions about onsite parking and the business's operations and its compatibility with adjacent religious facilities. At that meeting, those questions were raised, and we clarified about the parking meeting code and the business operations. Subsequent to that meeting, because the project was continued for about 30 days, city officials met with representatives of the adjacent religious facilities. So there is a mosque Islamic center operating to the east, and there's a church operating to the west. And out of that meeting, which lasted about an hour, some extra conditions of approval were proposed and added to the resolutions for this project. So the first would be preparation and distribution of a bookings or events plan on a regular basis to the adjacent property owners, so that they can have an idea of what lies ahead, especially during times where there may be sensitive religious activities happening onsite, particularly during the month of Ramadan, for example, at the Islamic Center. So that would happen every two months, where that sort of bookings and events plan would be provided by the operator to the adjacent properties. Secondly, the meeting resulted in proposals to construct additional perimeter walls and gates to help better contain noise and folks who may trespass or who may erroneously drive onto adjacent properties looking for parking when in reality they should be parking on the Holiday Inn Express site. And finally, a condition was added to require review of the Conditional Use Permit after six months to ensure that it's operating in conformance with the Santa Ana Municipal Code and its conditional, conditions of approval. So that review would happen if this were approved six months, and the city would look at whether there's been any significant police or code enforcement complaints, whether the conditions of approval such as construction of these new perimeter walls and gates has been completed, and other items that are required by the conditions in the resolution. In addition, to dig a little bit deeper, we did contact adjacent cities to see how this operator has been operating in the cities of Anaheim and Lake Forest. And in those cities, Anaheim had nothing to say, although the operator indicated tonight that they've ceased operations in Anaheim. And Lake Forest officials said that prior to this operator taking over the banquet hall that they currently operate there, there were incidents with the previous ownership, but that since the applicants took over, those calls for service have disappeared. So that's what we received from Lake Forest. In addition, I'd like to just take a moment to clarify some text that was present in the last staff report, where it was written that the land uses to the west and east were office buildings. As I've indicated before, those are religious facilities. So one of them is a two-building office complex occupied by a church, and to the east is an Islamic center. So just wanted to make those clarifications for the record. In analyzing the report, as was heard on November 12th, with these added conditions of approval and with the operating standards already in the Santa Ana Municipal Code, the projects won't be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. That is the intent of having a Conditional Use Permit for these sort of uses, where we can review and take action if needed. Operational standards already in the code are intended to lessen impacts created by the use, so ensuring that music can't be heard basically outside the building, requiring a security plan, security cameras, alternative transportation, just in case someone needs assistance getting home, that the operator have policies and standards on file to help people get a ride home safely. CUPs, as the citywide are typical for a banquet use, and they will allow this business as a restaurant to remain competitive with that sort of added component of having banquet on the weekends or at nights for special events. And in addition, this project does support the goals and policies of the general plan by helping a very long vacant and blighted building finally have a permanent tenant in it. So based on this analysis, staff recommends approval of CUP 2019-33 for the banquet facility, 2019-34 for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption, and finally, 2019-35 to allow late-night operations until 1:00 a.m., all as conditioned. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does the commission have any questions of Ally and Seth?
I have one question.
Cynthia and Norma.
Is Conditional Use Permit 2019-35, do they all have to be approved, or can one not be approved? So do all the permits, you know how sometimes you've told us, they said that all of them have to be approved for the project to go, or can one of them not pass, and then the project still moves forward?
As written with three distinct resolutions, the commission could choose to take action on one or more of the items.
Okay, thank you.
Norma?
If you actually have a Lake Forest operator, if this operator took the word Lake Forest at some point in time, how long have they been operating?
I don't recall the exact timeframe, but when we get to the applicant's comments, we can ask.
Any other questions of staff? Nope? Okay, Ally, thank you. Okay, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication at this point in time on this item?
Yes, all communication received by the deadline has been posted on our website and distributed.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak at this point in time?
Good evening, my name is Oscar Sejar Ramirez, I'm one of the applicant, along with my brother, which is standing right behind me. But, you know, just to clarify, we've been in Lake Forest, two years is going to be in January, so we've been there for two years already. We've been in business for a little bit over 17 years, so as, you know, Ally mentioned, we haven't really had any incidents with either one of the cities, and I need to answer any questions you might have.
Norma, do you have a question of the applicant at this point in time?
Yes, just, so talking about Lake Forest and Anaheim, what was the reason that you seized operation in Anaheim?
The property in Anaheim was sold, and they're going to be building homes, apartments, complexes, so that's why we had to relocate.
Cynthia?
Was that the banquet hall that was there?
Yes, at the Anaheim location, we had two different halls, so, yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call the speakers at this point in time. Ashley Tinnaharo?
Hello, my name is Ashley Tinnaharo, I'm the general manager of the Holiday Inn Express, the building in the same parking lot as the facility. I support the Conditional Use Permit. I have a letter here that was submitted to you guys from our ownership that I'd like to read. To the members of the Planning Commission, I represent the landlord of the property located on 1602 East First Street. My management company owns the adjacent hotel business, the newly opened Holiday Inn Express. Our tenant for the property, the banquet, or the Place Banquet Hall, is applying for a Conditional Use Permit to operate the restaurant and banquet hall and sale of alcoholic beverages and onsite consumption. We believe this use is very compatible with our hotel, as they are both hospitality businesses. It has come to our attention that the Planning Commission continued a hearing of the Conditional Use Permit so that the tenant, the city, and the neighboring churches could meet and review the project to express their concerns. Letters of opposition from the neighboring churches were, to our understanding, submitted only a few hours before the previous meeting, which expressed concerns over the sale of alcoholic beverages after our operations, noise, security, and parking. I find myself baffled at these concerns, especially given the existing state of security and safety of our property. There is drug use, prostitution, fighting, human defecation, break-ins on property, and I'm there every day, and I get to witness it and deal with it. So I definitely, all of those things are true every single day. We received many complaints from our hotel guests who have clear view of this environment when they come to stay with us. I have included photos with the letter to illustrate the unsafe environment that currently exists on the property. Vacant and abandoned properties are a liability of any business, and they attract this type of unsafe filthy environment. Homeless people intentionally seek out vacant buildings for shelter, which is why it's critical for our tenant to fill this space as soon as possible. Not only is this vacancy a risk and liability that is impacting our business, it is impacting the safety and security of the surrounding community, including the neighboring churches. The longer this building is left vacant, and these problems remain unaddressed, the higher the likelihood of crime seeping into the rest of the surrounding community. All of our efforts mitigate these issues, including the hiring of a security guard, which we have from 10:00 p.m. till 6:00 a.m. every single day, seven days a week, and our calls to the police are clearly not effective in resolving this issue. The reason there is even a restaurant use involved in the first place is because the city requested this use. During our initial meeting with the city, they expressed concern for the banquet hall due to the lack of parking spaces to the original agreement to the hotel. The city requested the tenant add a restaurant use Monday through Friday to their business since it's required less parking than banquet hall, and the tenant agreed. Now we find ourselves in this position because our restaurant use added to appease the city's request. It's very frustrating for all stakeholders involved. There is shared, there is a shared parking agreement in place with the Church of the West.
Can you wrap it up?
Sure. Just one other thing, is that we have 247 spots, which is 65 more than the city required us to have, and I've been taking counts for two weeks now, and even on our highest occupancy night, and we've been doing it at midnight every night, the most we've had with 161 rooms occupied is 115 cars. So we definitely have enough parking to accommodate both.
Thank you, Ash.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Alex Cho?
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Alex Cho, and I am a member of the Jesus Baptist Central Church. I am here with my fellow concerned church members right behind me. I want to first begin by thanking you for your time and consideration and opportunity to present our case regarding the sale and distribution of hard liquor by the adjacent banquet hall to our institution. We were unable to address the hard liquor issue during the November 22nd meeting between the applicant and Building Department Agency due to the limited time constraint. So we would like to address it at this time. We formally request that hard liquor not be sold at the banquet on the grounds that it is located between two places of worship, a church and the mosque, and can be disruptive to their respective members. Although the banquet aims to install a fence and gate around its perimeter, the adjacent sidewalk and parking lot are open pedestrian areas where people can loiter and disrupt the neighborhood. Selling hard liquor increases the likelihood of drunken behavior and even harassment, especially at night, given that we regularly host events for the youth in our community, including the weekends. Furthermore, the banquet claims that they will primarily host family parties, and it is our understanding that hard liquor is not usually present or necessary at this time, at this type of event. It is important to us that we maintain a safe environment for our community. So we ask that you take this into consideration and ban the distribution of hard liquor at this site. Once again, thank you for your time, consideration, and attention to our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. Isol Lee?
Hi, my name is Isol Lee, and I am currently a university student. I'm part of our Central Baptist Church of the Young Adult Group. I just have a concern about the hard liquor license that the restaurant will have in the future, and as he has previously said, we are very concerned about the future loitering and the safety of the youth, the youth and young adult community of our church, and we hope you guys will, you will take this into account as you make a decision as to as to whether hard liquor can be sold in this restaurant. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Isol. Ibrado Salinas?
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Errol Salinas. I'm Latino. I belong to the JBCH Church in Santa Ana on First Street. I've been a member since two thousand thirteen, and the church has been established in that area since two thousand five. And I think it has provided a lot of good influence to the community. I've been a resident of Santa Ana for almost thirty years, and I know how Santa Ana has been impacted by violence, drugs, gangs, and, you know, a lot of these proposals, projects like dance clubs, nightclubs, or cantinas or liquors. So honestly, I don't think it's properly that this proposal, this banquet, place banquet hall, be, you know, located or planning to locate at this part of Santa Ana on First Street. This street has been hit by so much drug crime, and I think JBCH has been a big impact to the community and especially to our Latinos. I'm really concerned about my family, all my family. I'm a family of five, have three childrens. My kid couldn't make it today, I have a teenager, because he got sick. He had diarrhea and was really sick, couldn't make it. And my wife, she's at work, so she couldn't be here. But I oppose to this project because of my community. I'm really concerned about my community. I want Santa Ana better. And instead of bringing liquor stores, bringing nightclubs, we need something else, more education, okay? And church speaks about education and moral values, okay? And do what is right. So I oppose to this project because of two points. The operations, I wrote the documents a little bit, okay? And according to my understanding, it has incorrect information or wrong information. There's some errors that needs to be fixed. So I ask you commissioners to consider it before you make a righteous judgment, okay? So it states that the operations of the place banquet hall are going to be compatible with our church, with our program, with the plan, and it's incorrect. And I will give you the annual plan, just to think about it, okay? We have our annual plan every year, fifty nights of young adult fellowship every Saturday from six PM to ten PM, okay? Fifty-nine young adult activities, okay? Twenty weekend nights of ten Bible seminars, Monday to Saturday, from six PM to ten PM. We have three nights of summer retreats.
Ibrado, can you wrap it up, please?
Okay, all right. And the banquet states where I wrote, I mean, when I read, it states that a school office, a school district offices hours, seven thirty from four thirty Monday to Friday. Religious facilities to the east operates hours from five thirty to eight PM. And our office building, that's how they quoted, that we are an office building, not a church facility or religious facility. It says expected to have similar hours as the other businesses surrounding the area. So, you know, they're stating that they won't, we won't be having any problems with the hours operations.
Thank you, Ibrado.
And we do.
Appreciate it, thank you. You've got three minutes, and that's you all over it, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much for allowing me to listen, thank you.
Okay. Hassan Lee?
Hello, my name is Hassan Lee. I'm a member of Baptist Church. Last hearing, one of the commissioner mentioned about the parking lot. Very simple calculation, the hotel has a two hundred and forty-six parking space and hotel has one hundred and thirty-one room and the steps, there's around fifteen steps. Hotel only need at least hundred and forty-six parking space. So out of two hundred and forty-six parking space, minus one forty-six, only hundred left. The banquet full capacity is five hundred and thirty-something people. Supposing they are coming, two persons a car, you need about two hundred and sixty-three parking space. So you have only one hundred parking space where the one hundred and sixty-three car will go. As you know, with the blueprint, the south of the hotel, there is a parking lot of the hotel and a parking lot of the church meets each other, but there's no fence. So naturally, people who cannot find the parking space, they will start looking for the parking space and come to the church's parking space. Of course, there is some of shared parking with hotel and church, but eventually they will fully occupy whole church parking lot in case of the banquet is full of five hundred and thirty-something people. So before the city grant CUP this time, I strongly ask you to solve this problem first. That's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you, Hassan. Sean Tu?
Good evening, Member of Commissioners. My name is Sean, Sean Tu. I'm the President of the Islamic Center of Santa Ana. Sorry. You know, if we worked this cup differently, I'd probably reject some and accept some. On the first hearing on November twelve, I think there's such an uproar because, you know, the church on two sides of the place banquet hall, the church and the Islamic Center, when it comes to selling hard liquor, we're not, we're not compatible, basically. That's the first point that we'd like to point out. The second point I would like to point out is, you know, the place of worship, we like to have some quiet and stuff like that. So when it has some music and live entertainment, it's immediately hit us right away. So that's the second point. The third point is the security. You know that the area that we're located in is considered a high crime rate? So with mixing up music and liquor, that's would probably exacerbate the problem. That's the third point. And the fourth point I'd like to bring is the loitering and argument and square, you know, when people are in high intoxicated, most likely there's some issues gonna happen. So with that four points, I'd like to bring to your attention, naturally, we are against it, you know? But if there's some way that you can control these issues, I guess, and then after six months, we reconsider it, I think that's, to me, it's, it's, it's not, not like, I'm not again as strong as the first time, but I'm willing to give it a go. But, you know, we need to monitor it so that to ensure the safety of the community and make sure everything is okay, you know? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Desi Reyes?
Good evening, Chair.
Okay.
Chair and Commissioner. My name is Desi. Don't come here often, so this is usually, can't deal with this. So hi, Norma, I'm on Ward One, right in the neighborhood there, Saddleback View Neighborhood. The south boundary of our neighborhood is right south of this, north of this project, okay? So I am here, I'm not speaking on behalf of the neighborhood, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but living in the city since, oh gosh, nineteen seventy-two perhaps, went to Garden Grove ten years and then came back. And I lived in that neighborhood from nineteen ninety-one, since nineteen ninety-one. That hotel used to be a Ramada, Ramada Inn, I believe, many, many, many years ago, back in the seventies or eighties. And it's right, First Street is going through a transformation, a positive transformation right now, okay? The Holiday Inn Express has invested millions of dollars into that site, which is great for the area. That means that economic development is being encouraged in the area. The crime, yes, there is crime, but as we see big projects coming into that area, First Street, such as the Santa Ana Zoo improvements, this is, the crime will go away. Most of it will go away. I support the project, okay? The operator has a track record. There's a six-month, six-month review period. If there's an issue, believe me, the neighborhood's gonna, the neighborhood's gonna come out. I will be here talking about it if there becomes an issue. But I think overall, it's gonna be positive for the area. Right now, these people are right, there's vagrants in front of that building, it looks I sent an email last week for comments, I didn't see them attached to the minutes, I don't know, maybe they went to the wrong place. Said ecomments, that's where it went to. But I had some comments there in support of it. I did want to stress, maybe lighting could be improved in front of the building, maybe underneath the eaves of the building, put recessed lightings to illuminate the sidewalk area. I think that would be positive to just, because right now it's very dark out there. There's two street lights on each end of the building. The, you know, I think giving them a six-month review period is good, see how it works, but I, overall, First Street's going through a transformation, and it's great, it's positive, based on what, you know, it's gonna be much better, I believe. I don't have a light here, so I don't know when this is gonna be over.
You've got three seconds.
Three seconds, are you sure? Where's that at? So anyways, that's my, my comments, and I believe there's an additional twenty-some parking spaces with the church next door.
Thank you, Desi. That's the last of the cards that have been provided at this point in time. Would anybody else like to speak on this item at this point in time? If so, come on up. Please state your name and address, and then you can fill out a card after, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Sitlali Rivera. I'm a member of the California Church. I believe I spoke last hearing, but I forgot to point out some other things that I had in mind. You know, I grew up in the city of Santa Ana, and I understand, you know, both parties like, like what they want, you know, realize, but, you know, at the church, we have praise nights, and I'm in the choir too, but, I mean, we're not, you know, we're not asking for like an entertainment license, right? So if you guys could please consider that, you know, because, I mean, I've been to restaurants, nice restaurants, they just play like normal music, you know? And that's one point, and aside from the parking spots or spaces, because the proximity is so close with like, from like the church entrance and the, and the restaurant, or, you know, my main concern here is, again, you know, there's gonna be, you know, hard liquors sold for the, the safety of the children, there's, you know, there's small children, like families, and so that's my other, my other concern, you know, just, I mean, I mean drunk driving, you know, driving under the influence, especially at those, of those night of, or those days of, I mean, those hours of the day, you know, it's late night and, and a lot of the times, like, you know, other members have spoken, we have reunions, and, and if there's gonna be like people coming out of a bar, it's just gonna create like, not a really good atmosphere, and that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would the applicant at this time like to say anything with regards to?
I just gotta say something real quick, but, you know, one of the priorities is definitely safety, and I can tell you one thing is, being operating for seventeen years and not having any issues, that really tells you something. Secondly, I know the parking lot might be an issue, but when I said this, it's a family-oriented, it's definitely a family-oriented, meaning it's not a nightclub where one or two people are gonna show up in a car. I mean, our community or customers, most, most of the time are Hispanics, and they're normally riding a car with four or five people in it, so I don't think that's gonna be an issue. But overall, like I said, safety is one of our priorities, and I don't mean it just inside, but outside the banquet hall as well. So normally, our security guards, there's normally room in the parking lot as well. But basically, that's all I have to say unless you guys have another question for me.
Does anybody have a question of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. As far as, so the restaurant hours is, do you know what the hours are set for the restaurant as of this time, or?
We're thinking between twelve to seven during the week. If there's no event scheduled on the weekend, then we'll open for business as a restaurant. Obviously, our objective is to stay open twenty-four seven, well, maybe not on holidays, but to stay open pretty much throughout the week.
So if, so if it would be on the weekend, it would still be twelve to seven if you have no events, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then for the banquet, it would be, we're looking at five to?
Normally, it's five to twelve. It's very rare that we'll go over twelve o'clock. I mean, it does happen from time to time, but it will not exceed one o'clock. But ninety percent of the time, most of the events will end by twelve.
Okay, and that's only Friday, Saturday, Sunday, correct?
Correct.
And as far as, so entertainment, did somebody mention something about entertainment? Entertainment's only gonna be for the banquet hours, not during restaurant hours, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Entertainment will be only provided when we do have an event going on. On the weekdays, when the restaurant's gonna be open, yeah, we probably play background music, but nothing, no blasting speakers, anything like that, no.
Okay. Those are your questions.
Cynthia?
So if you're having an event and the client wants to bring in a live band, a band or something, you're going to allow them to?
Well, yes, I mean, that's one of the things that we normally have on the events. Mine might not happen, it all depends on the client.
Are you flexible at all with the time you close for the events on the weekends?
And the events, flexible as far as ending at what time, you mean?
In closing, not going till one?
Not going till one o'clock? So you wanna go until midnight?
Would you be flexible if that was proposed?
That's, that's okay, like I said, ninety percent of our events, it ends at midnight, so if that's what you guys want, I'm okay with it.
It's just a question.
That's fair, 'cause he noted that. Ken?
You indicated there would be a banquet hall. Could you give some example, what type of activities that will hold at the facility?
You mean the routine of when we normally have an event?
Yes.
Well, normally, the event will start between five and six o'clock, depending on the event. Normally, the first two hours is dinner time. They will, you know, get in there like around, let's say, five o'clock or so, and, you know, basically during that time, it's background music. Maybe they'll have a mariachi or something like that, but it's nothing loud with speakers, and if there is a DJ playing, it's basically playing background music. So for the first two hours, it's normally dinner time. Right after dinner time, depending on the event, but let's say it's a wedding, then they will start doing like, you know, their first dance, dollar dance, and so on and so forth. I would say probably the main event or music normally starts around nine thirty or nine o'clock, or, it just depends on how the event moves, but the main, main dancing or entertainment, let's just put it that way, it will probably be, I'm thinking between eight thirty to like midnight, that's just normally the case, but every event is a little bit different. Every event has their own ways to do it, so it just, it might vary.
Just give me some examples, what type of event gonna be held there?
For the most part, we do have, we do host a lot of weddings, we do host a lot of quinceañeras, we do host quite a bit of anniversaries, we also host a lot of corporate events. And sometimes it's just a meeting, there's not even music, so it just depends on what we have in, but for the majority, it's weddings, quinceañeras, reunions, and corporate events more than anything.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have any question? One thing I was gonna note, if you're closing at twelve and you've got, I believe there's security in here, security requirement for one, one security person per hundred people?
Yes, normally it's one per hundred.
And that's what you plan on having?
Yes.
Okay. And how late will that security?
Security leaves until the party's over. So once the party's over, that's when they leave.
So even if there's people lingering in the parking lot, you're gonna have the security leave?
No, well, the security leaves until the last person leaves, pretty much. So basically, they will stay around until everybody leaves. And that includes the parking lot.
Before they leave the parking lot. So there will be some safety from that standpoint?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right. I'm good with that. Any other questions of the applicant at this point in time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Does anybody wanna have a discussion at this point in time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my sounds are personal concern, a couple of things on, on the CUP. This description of light entertainment, my concern is could turn to a nightclub, a thing like that type thing. And my second concern, which I did address at the last hearing, that in my personal feeling that I don't think the applicant necessary to need to type forty-seven, which means hard liquor on the application. I did recommend that the applicant should seek for type forty-one, beer and wine only. I personally, I would not support for type forty-seven. I would not support for after-hours. And that's the two item I would like, I would, I would like to make a comment on that.
Okay. Thank you. Felix?
I think it being a banquet hall, it's kind of important to let the, I guess their clients make the decision whether or not they wanna have liquor or beer and wine. I think that's kind of like their selling point, whether more expensive, less expensive. So, I mean, I wouldn't be, you know, having them change the liquor license. I think the liquor as, as far as the type forty-seven is fine, because it's not, it's not like that's what they're gonna be selling daily. It's just an option for the banquet. So whoever's renting the banquet, I was gonna figure out whether they wanna do beer and wine or hard liquor.
Cynthia?
So I'll share my concerns and then if you guys have any input, I'd appreciate it, because I'm a little torn. I'm sure back whenever the churches established themselves there, they looked around at the area to see what type of environment there was for the church that they were going to establish. I'm sure if there was a banquet hall next to it that was going till midnight, one o'clock, perhaps the, the decision might not have been made to establish there. I do see issues with parking. Midnight is better than one, but I, I do see issues with parking and, and that's not gonna go away. So that's where I'm torn. I don't know if anybody else feels that way. You know, we just finished a big project where it wasn't, the place was not a good fit. And although we do need business, we do need to get rid of plight and so forth. I don't know if there's some modifications. Obviously, I believe that the place does need a restaurant, 'cause the hotel, it complements it very well. And in fact, the churches on a Sunday could go for some breakfast, but those other issues are the ones that are, are kind of with me right now, so that's where I'm at.
I would like to.
Go ahead, no?
That issue, only because if I remember correctly, there was a Saddleback Inn in that area a long time ago.
Right.
And Saddleback Inn actually did host events, both for weddings and quinceañeras and dating myself, that I've been over in the city. And so I'm very familiar with that, that they did host these types of events in that general area already. And so just to address your point, Cynthia, that I don't think that it would be needed to, the organizations already establishing, either religious organizations. And so I don't know, that one or the other, it's, it's new to me, whether churches there, Saddleback Inn, it's like that chance or.
How long they've been established in the area? Does staff, does staff know that?
I believe back in two thousand and five was when we worked on the initial application to allow the church to have a reduction in parking and to share the hotel parking law. So I know, at least since two thousand and five.
So Saddleback was already there? Saddleback Inn was?
Saddleback Inn has been around a little bit older than that.
But was Saddleback functioning at that time?
Was on life support around that time.
It was on, I mean, 'cause they just, they just, they literally just, they just saw, they just agreed upon a case this past week about?
There was not much of a shot of it there.
Right.
And the Islamic Center was about a year or so ago?
Three, three years ago.
Three years ago.
Three years ago.
But at the time, it was also dramatic in hotels, like, and, and.
That's right.
When the restaurant was inside the hotel.
No.
The same one.
And, and to the other side of it is that we as a commission, when the Holiday Inn Express came in front of us, we approved it on the basis of the Holiday Inn Express along with a restaurant. And the restaurant was a separate entity and it was gonna be in the building that we are currently talking about. So this is not a new situation from the standpoint of just coming up with this in the last six months. This has been on the table for several years. And now, a lot of other things have been, you know, brought to, brought to the table, which I would have expected some of those, if not most of them, to be resolved at the time when we did the original CUP and original, you know, land use change. And that was, Ally, date that to us, what would that be timewise?
Holiday Express came before the commission, I'd say, two or three years ago.
Yeah, right. So, you know, and I think your point, Norma, about, you know, the fact that there have been other, other venues on the street that support that type of activity brings it to play. I think the other thing, I'll go back to Ken's comment earlier, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, the proposed owners of the banquet did say that they were willing to potentially start out with a forty-one and then go on to a forty-seven. So I think that was sort of a, shall we say, a gentleman's agreement that was made at the last discussion. And now I think the other discussion that Cynthia has brought up, about that extra hour, 'cause operating hours normally would be from seven in the morning till midnight?
Correct.
And you wouldn't need an additional CUP at this point in time to support that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, are you, you all right?
But, Mr. Chairman, I do not have an issue with the restaurant. I think this restaurant would be a compliment to the hotel next door. I do have issue with banquet facility, of course, my biggest concern is called live entertainment. My, my concern is because at the banquet facility, we operate the weekend during the time, the two churches, the mosque next, both sides of the property in, and have activity of religious activity during that time. And, and the banquet facility, you know, the, I'm, I'm a Christian myself and we, Saturday evening, we have a lot of activity at our own church and so on. The church may have the activity at their own church as well. At the same time, the facility will have like, you know, some sort of a wild party and loud music and so on, interrupt activity of the church, which is, that's my bigger concern. And also, like I said again, you know, I would suggest the applicant should apply for forty-one at first and see how it goes and, you know, and then maybe if needed to, and come back and for forty-seven later, but it doesn't look like they're going that route. So I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with it.
Okay. So here again, the forty-one, we have the discussion about the forty-one, and I understand your, your concerns. They're valid and we, we should move, you know, we should look at it, but does anybody wanna make a motion at this point in time or how? Which CUP at this point in time is associated with the after hour of one, one P M? The last one, thirty-five?
Yeah, thirty-five, yeah.
Two thousand, okay. So that one, we, we can basically make a, make a call on that one as being continued, not continuing, but how would we?
If you, if you're recommending that they close at midnight?
Yes.
Then they don't need a conditional use permit two thousand and nineteen dash thirty-five.
Right. Okay. Right, so, okay, got it. Now, on the other side, the applicant is going for an entertainment license, so I think the concern that you have to some extent, Ken, is that however he chooses to pick that, how, whatever entertainment license he chooses to take, he's now under PD's eyes to see that they are in fact, you know, abiding by what that, that particular entertainment license requires them to do. So I think, you know, we've, we've put the controls in place to have that taken care of. So from my standpoint, if there's any other discussion, I'd like to have someone make a motion.
So it's not on here for the six months, correct? Or is?
It is, it is on the CUP.
So this, but this one says the, the SAMC code's correct, so is that only for that? Or it's saying?
I think the whole.
Or just, just review everything in six months? Is that what it is? Here we go.
It's the review of the operations, which is.
So is, would there be a way where we could, if we're reviewing it in six months, maybe bring back the conditional use permit and that last one and say whether or not, kind of see what their operations has been looking like? And would it be useful for them to give them that additional hour, depending on what their operations look like? 'Cause the way that I see it is just, you're limiting a lot of stuff that the banquet can do, because that's basically their job. You know, if I, when I got married, I decided that all I wanted was beer and wine. I decided I wanted it to be over at eleven. But you start putting these parameters on the actual business, then they can't do certain things. So people look for places, different venues. So I just think that, you know, maybe bringing it back in six months and then we can talk about whether or not that hour would be useful for them, or maybe they decide twelve's fine and they don't need one o'clock.
There are several avenues you could take with that condition. You could require, through a condition of approval, that we revisit it in six months to them, give them that authority. You may also choose to amend that condition to say that if after that six-month period there's been a clean record, no code enforcement, no police calls for service, then administratively we can approve the type forty-seven and administratively we can approve them until one A M. So if now you had a condition of approval that granted it, but with a sort of delay period, that would be one item. Or you can elect to modify the condition to require them to come before you for that approval. So those are the two avenues we could explore.
Go ahead.
Could we, I was going to ask, if we do the first six months to see where we're at? Let's say we check in and we find out what's going on also, as well as with their neighbors' calls and so forth. If it's, if it's clean, everything's going well, I, I understand. But if it's not, say we go another six months and at that point, if we're good, then they're granted the both that they wanna go off, which is the one o'clock, the other hour, and then the other permit?
Are they granted that or do we have to take that back in front of the commission and review it? Or is it something that you do, like you said, I think administratively from?
I would just say we would have to carefully craft the verbiage to kind of outline these sort of measurement intervals and see like, okay, if by X time, then Y has occurred, then this can be allowed. So we'd really have to kind of pencil that out right now.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in my, in my opinion, six is a little too short, because the applicant, if they get the approval, they need to, they will spend some time remodeling or repairing, fixing up the place before rate of a business, right? You know, so, you know, we can say on the six month after the first day of business would make more sense, because they could take up to two year to, you know, remodeling and whatever repair.
Do you read condition number ten? So then six months would be issuance as a particular office?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
That I would have expected to be the CUP at the time it's issued, then you start the six-month clock. That could be a year from now.
Yep, that makes sense.
Or nine months from now, but it, it is when, when the CUP's released.
Yeah, the intent is six months of actual operations, not three months of build-out when nothing's happening. So you'll get six solid months of operations to then make that evaluative period, you know, make that decision.
You know, I, I think the other side of it is, I'm gonna go back to Desi's comment earlier from, you know, the public comments, and that is, is that, you know, we've gone through and redefined that corridor, that First Street corridor, to reflect improvements that we're trying to make across the board from, you know, Tustin Avenue down to the center of the city. And, you know, this is a project that hopefully will improve the, the neighborhood, improve the activities that are going on and kind of detract from some of the things that are happening with the homeless and things of that nature that has been going on on a daily basis. And if there's occupancy and people around, that might be something that helps. And the last thing you wanna do is have people coming into Santa Ana and staying at the hotel and having a bad experience at this point in time because of what we have. And it sounds like that could, that too is an issue that we have at this point in time.
I just do wanna make one final distinction for the commission's benefit, that there is a code definition difference between a nightclub, which is indoor recreation, which is a completely separate CUP, versus a banquet hall, which is defined as a facility that's available for booking for private events. So this is, if this were gonna be a nightclub and if, let's say this facility somehow, without permits, transitioned into a nightclub, and we got the calls for complaints and they were advertising a DJ, you know, full bar, you know, people could pay to enter, just like a nightclub, that would definitely require code, that would trigger code enforcement. And if the applicant wanted to even pursue that, they'd have to come before this commission to seek a separate CUP.
Perfect.
So the code makes a very clear distinction in definitions between a banquet hall for special events and a nightclub for routine operations at nightclub.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last clarification. If you want, we should just continue that third item, like with the criminal sector, stay consistent. We have to continue, go through that whole, we get here and then come back to you for your decision. Well, I'm grabbing CUP, so I'd rather remain consistent with what we did in criminal sector about a month or two ago. If you wanna come back and check on us, you know, just continue the item.
Continue the entire item you?
That, well, there's another grade, a third CUP.
The third CUP, I agree. Yeah, I agree. I agree. I agree on that one.
I would agree to that.
Felix, you gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CUP two thousand and nineteen, thirty-three and thirty-four and continue thirty-five to six months after they open to see if we're gonna extend it, that extra hour.
And are we gonna do anything with regards to type forty-one versus type forty-seven? I mean, it's, you made the motion, I'm not, I just?
That as is, as conditions, no?
As condition, okay. Forty-seven, okay.
Can we add the, the six months parking be reviewed? It's in there, it's in there, yeah, okay.
Or just everything, six months. Complaint, police, court, parking, signage.
Ken, you good?
No, I'm uncomfortable with the type forty-seven. I feel, I still suggest that applicant should seek forty-one first and give us time to evaluate their business activity. And they, they welcome, more than welcome to come back to forty-seven later.
Okay. A, a statement? All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Norma. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none? All is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All is opposed?
No.
No? All right, abstained? All right, so it's four, one and one. Okay. Now's the time to consider item number two, conditional use permit two zero one eight dash one six for the project located at twenty-five hundred South Fairview Street. Please note decisions on this matter are final unless appealed within ten days of any interested individual or group. Do any of the commissioners at this point in time have anything to disclose with regards to this item? No? Okay, I, okay. Ivan will hold off until the rest of the people leave.
Do you want me to start? I can.
No, you, you could.
Generally, pretty quiet on there.
We'll let the people leave. I know, that's what... Now it'll be on the blogs that Ken Wynn was drinking beer at the...
Mr. Chair.
Ivan, you okay?
Yeah.
All right, let's go.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Before you is application number, CUP number two thousand eighteen dash sixteen. This application is for a request to construct a new sixty-foot mono-eucalyptus for the property located at twenty-five hundred South Fairview Street. So as I mentioned, this is an application for a new monopole disguised as a mono-eucalyptus. I'll go over the location of the facility here. So a little bit of the site description is, it is located in a property currently zoned industrial. It currently has two large buildings, multi-tenant, mostly industrial uses, manufacturing and warehouse. The location of the facility is towards the southeast of the property. So the two red markers at the back of the properties you see in the image, the square is where the enclosure will be, the solid CMU enclosure with all the equipment, and the circle is where the monopole will be located. As I mentioned, it's an industrial area, mostly commercial and industrial uses. And to the west is the channel for flood control. So this is a site plan that was provided. As indicated, the site location for the facilities towards the back of the property on the southwest. The image below is an enlarged site plan to show the location of the enclosure with the two adjacent landscape planters, where the two trees will be planted, and landscaping shrubs, vines around the CMU enclosure. And then just to the top right is where the mono-euc is being proposed. These are a few elevations. The first is on the north elevation, the second is the east. And these are a few photo simulations. The image to the right is where the parking area is, behind the buildings, the two existing buildings, and it's looking south. So you'll see the mono-euc to the left and the enclosure just straight ahead. And this image or photo simulation is taken from, I believe, Central Avenue, which is just the street, the cul-de-sac to the south of the property. So a little bit of the project, it does meet and it complies with all major wireless facility standards that the Santa Ana Municipal Code has. The facility will improve the cellphone coverage in the area. And the project will also enhance, through the screening, the landscaping and the facility itself. So with that, staff concludes the presentation and is recommending approval of conditional use permit number twenty eighteen dash sixteen as conditioned. I believe the applicant is here as well, if you have any additional questions. And staff may be able to answer any questions you may have as well.
Thank you, Ivan. Does the commission have any questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you have any study of result regarding the radio frequencies that possible cause cancer, the harmful to residents or surrounding people and need that cell tower?
Didn't see that one.
Commissioner Duane, cities are not allowed to regulate construction of cell towers taking the radio frequency into consideration.
Thank you.
There's federal and state law on that.
Ken, any others?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Norma.
The project analysis says that if it complies with the major wireless facility standard, so that leads me to conclude that there are some facility standards that we're not complying with. Can I read that there?
No, it meets all the standards of the major wireless facility.
Major versus...
Yeah. Thank you.
You good, Norma? Good, okay. Any other questions of Ivan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
Yes, all communication received by the deadline has been distributed and posted on our website.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open up the public hearing. Does the applicant like to, would the applicant like to say anything at this point in time?
Good evening. My name is Jenna DiAgostino. I work for J5 on behalf of AT&amp;T. I just want to thank Ivan for doing a good presentation there. Hit all the major points. I just wanted to add two things. One, I know you can't formally ask about emissions, but the site has been deemed FCC compliant as far as emissions go. All AT&amp;T sites are FCC compliant. And secondly, this does expand the first net frequency, which I don't know, as you know, maybe you know, is for first responders. All firemen, policemen have a specific network that they go on to and can use their phones, so they don't get jammed when there's an emergency. This site does contain that frequency. Thank you. And I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions of the applicant at this point in time? No? I'm going to assume, Jenna, you've said your piece, so you don't have to speak another three minutes.
Uh, no, I just did that, so you had my information.
All right, well, we're good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Does anyone else, at this point in time, would like to comment on this item? Hearing none? We'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. Cynthia?
I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP number two thousand eighteen dash sixteen as conditioned.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Felix? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero, five zero and one absent. This is the time and place to consider item number three, conditional use permit two zero one eight dash one six for the project located at two zero two West Fourth Street. Decisions on this matter unless otherwise appealed within ten days by any interested individual or group? Does any commissioner have anything to disclose at this point in time on this item?
No.
Okay. It's yours.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the planning commission. As mentioned, this application is on behalf of the business owner Truman Seversent, who owns Hopper and Burr, which is located at two oh two West Fourth Street. And the request is for a conditional use permit number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-seven to allow the sale of beer and wine. The request as mentioned is for the sale of beer and wine in existing eating or eating establishment cafe that will open back in two thousand sixteen. No site or tenant improvements are being proposed at this site at this time. Recently, the Spurgeon Historic Building, which this tenant space is located in, went through some minor alterations inside, just as an FYI. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Sycamore Street and Fourth Street. Right to the rear of that, you do have the city-owned parking structure. And then adjacent to that, you also have Peak Suppressed. Being displayed now is just a floor plan due to the current conversions of the tenant space. The yellow or the, sorry, I'm colorblind today apparently. The red boxes indicate the locations of the proposed display area and the storage area for alcohol, which is below the allow threshold specifying the Santa Ana Municipal Code. The cafe does operate from seven AM to seven PM. The applicant is proposing to have the sale of alcohol between the hours of eleven AM and seven PM. And in terms of the square footage of the site, it's roughly about thirteen hundred square feet, and it can accommodate up to twenty-three patrons. With that, the proposed use does comply with the Santa Ana Municipal Codes. In addition to that, will provide a service to the residents and the visitors of the general area. Staff has imposed some conditions of approval. For example, there is a condition that does not allow the operations past midnight. So in the case the applicant does in the future want to operate past midnight, they will have to come before this body and get a after-hours CUP approved. And like most of the others' conditional use permanent applications, there is some language with regards to property maintenance. And with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit number twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven as conditioned. Feel free to answer any of your questions. The business owner is also here as well.
Does any of the commissioners have a question of Jerry and staff? No? Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Thank you. We will now open the hearing for a public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak at this point in time on this item?
Good evening. My name is Truman Seversent. I own the cafe, and I'll answer any questions if you guys have them.
Anybody have a question to the applicant? You're going to get off easy.
Great.
That's it? No questions? All right. I also do not have any speaker cards at this point in time, so... Seeing none? We'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody have a...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve a condition permit numbers two zero one nine dash three seven as conditioned.
Second.
Which did you ask? I thought you said three seven. It should be...
Hub, hub, and bub.
Two thousand nineteen dash three seven.
Yeah, hub and bub.
Two thousand nineteen dash...
Yep, type forty-one ABC license.
Got it. All right. Second? Okay. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's five zero with one absence. My problem is, is that, sorry, it says sixteen.
Thank you, I don't need to hear any.
That's right. Okay. Now's the time to consider item number four, conditional use permit two zero one nine dash three nine for the project located at two oh seven West Second Street. Pedro, it's yours.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. The next item on tonight's agenda is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a type forty-seven, beer, wine, and distilled spirits to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages and on-premise consumption for an existing banquet facility at two oh seven West Second Street for units A and B. The subject site is located on the Second Street promenade on the northwest corner of Sycamore and Second Street. The general plan designation is District Center, DC, and it's located in transit zoning code with the land use designation of downtown. It is surrounded by the Artist Village Public Park and Structure to the north, the live-worked lofts to the east, and commercial units to the south and the west. Since two thousand and thirteen, the facility has provided banquet and catering services to approximately seventy to a hundred, approximately seventy to a hundred times per year. The facility will continue to operate on a per-reservation basis, and the sale, service, and on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages will be taking place only during these reservation events. Alcoholic beverages will be stored within the facility's cooler and service counter-hours, excuse me, counter-areas, which will be less than two hundred square feet, so one point nine percent of the overall gross flow area proposed for both units A and B. Staff has determined that the request will benefit the community. It won't be detrimental to the health, safety, or the general welfare, and it will be in compliance to all applicable regulations and operation standards in the Santa Ana Municipal Code. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit two thousand nineteen thirty-nine as conditioned. I'm available for questions. I don't see that the applicant is here today, but I'll do my best to answer any questions on their behalf.
Okay, any questions for Pedro at this point in time? No? Okay. Thank you, Pedro. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. And the applicant is not here, so I also do not have any cards at this point in time. So if anybody would like to speak on this item at this point in time, please do so. If you do not, the public hearing is closed, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Any discussion on this from a commission point of view? Okay, would anybody like to make a motion at this point in time?
I'll make a motion to approve CUP two thousand nineteen dash thirty-nine as conditioned.
Second?
I'm second.
Ken, second? Any discussion beyond that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's five zero with one absence. Now's the time and place to consider item number five, amendment application number two zero one eight dash zero nine for the project located at ten ten North Tustin Avenue and eleven hundred B North Tustin Avenue. Please note, the recommendations on this matter will be forwarded to the City Council at a later date for final determination. If you wish to address the planning commission, please pull out a card. Before we begin, are there any, do any commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I had a conversation with Pastor Michael by phone today regarding the project.
Okay. Anybody else? That's it? All right? It's yours, Vince.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. Like my third year in a row, I get the last public hearing of the year. So here I am today with the Calvary Church team, who's in the audience here and will speak momentarily about their master plan. What you have before you is a proposal to do a zone change to an SD to allow the Calvary Church master plan to be created. This is an aerial photograph here of the site. You can see in the white, they're shaded in. The Calvary Church is surrounded by office uses to the north, to the south, and to the east, which is actually a global medical regional center of hospital. Then to the west is a single-family neighborhood. Little quick history of Calvary Church. First established in Santa Ana in nineteen thirty-one at the E-Bell Club in downtown Santa Ana. Back in nineteen sixty-two, close to when I was born, the church relocated to its current site here on Tustin Avenue. They bought the property a few years early for forty thousand dollars, about ten acres, and took five years to the fundraise and then start this church construction. Finally got christened back in nineteen sixty-two. And then over the next, what, forty years, nineteen, thirty years, construction occurred on the site, where in nineteen ninety-one, the last building, which was their big worship center, was built there. About ten years ago, they approached the city to do this master plan. We started going down that road, and then, as we all know, the Great Recession hit around that time. And the church said, asked to put a stop on the project because they wanted to go back and rethink where their future was, and nothing was quite happening back around that time, quite honestly. So we kind of did on standby. Last year, they came forward and said, you know, Vince, we're ready to move forward here with our master plan and our vision for the next thirty years. So here we are. Couple of photographs of the sites. The first one's the E-Bell Club. Second one's when they relocated back in the forties to another location in downtown area. So they've been part of our community for over seventy, seventy-five years, I believe it is now. If I do my math. Seventy-eight years, thank you. So what's before you tonight is a rezone. Property is currently zoned professional office, which doesn't allow the combination abuses out there. So they're asking for a zone change to an amendment application, which is basically an SD, our specific development application, to create development standards and allow the different uses to occur on the premises there, to make it all legal conforming. Right now, it's legal non-conforming. We're going to make it legal and make it all conform to the code. So we're looking to allow religious uses out there, which is occurring now, school uses, which they have two school uses, some aren't permitted, and then also an office building out there, which they also have ownership of an office building right there adjacent to their property. So we're looking to allow those three uses within the SD, which is a permitted uses. And then we're looking to adopt some setbacks, some height, and some signing standards. So setback standards, they're going to adopt pretty much what's out there right now. Buildings are pretty much built, with the exception of a couple of new buildings that go on to in a moment. They want to go a little bit taller. They want to go ahead and build a couple of three-story buildings. So we're looking to increase the height out there. And then they want to do a sign package, which I passed out to you. It's attached to your PowerPoint, and that was not included in the email. So I apologize for that, but you know, I'll have it for you this evening. And then what they have to do, because they own a couple of parcels, they do a lot merger to combine the lots into a single legal lot. And that's an administrative process handed to the staff level. There's existing site plan. There's ten buildings out there right now, as you can see there. Building H is the office... There's existing site plan. There's ten buildings out there right now, as you can see there. Building H is the office building that they own, they purchased several years ago and it's a medical office building and an office building, other office uses out there. The building on the corner here, which you can't read, it says not a part, this area right here is not part of their project site, this little piece right here is not, they do not own it, so it's not part of this SD package. So there's your existing campus right now. You can see the buildings are all clustered towards Tustin Avenue to the bottom, which is to the east. And then here's your revised plan, which would be seven buildings out there and they pretty much wanna modernize some of the buildings that were built starting in the early sixties. So that's your master plan. Again, all the building will occur towards the east. We're not touching the residential, getting near the residential, impacting them in any way that's located on the top of the slide there. And here's a couple of renderings of some of the poles elevations, consistent with the style they have right now. Again, it's a little modern touch to their existing campus. And these buildings are not before you this evening. They're looking to get the master plan approved. They'll come in and submit these buildings in the future to staff once they're ready to come forward and turn those buildings in for development. So right now, you're adopting the master plan, basically the shapes on the site plan, as well as the standards and the SD that goes with it. A little project comparison here for you. Again, there's ten buildings on the campus, they're downsizing to seven. They're increasing by about forty thousand square feet. So when they did that, we had them do an environmental analysis of the project and we have a mitigated negative declaration that we'll need you to act on in a few moments here. Uses on the campus, again, are the same as what they're proposing to do, no change in the uses. Some of the setbacks there, they're looking to increase the setbacks in this proposal. Thirty-five feet's what's allowed by the code right now under the P-zone. They wanna go up to about fifty-three feet, we wanna give them a little extra room there for the project sites, we're proposing sixty feet in here. Just a little FYI, the corridor to the east is unlimited height, right there next to freeway, so pretty much a lot of buildings, you know, the hospital's ten feet tall, but some other tall, ten stories tall, excuse me. This ten feet's pretty, yeah. My bad, sorry about that. Ten stories tall. There's some other buildings that have a non-Tustin corridor, they're much taller, so sixty feet is very compatible with what you see out there in the community. And again, this building is, these buildings will be separated way to the east, not have any impacts whatsoever to the residences. And then the last one they wanna modify a little bit is that there are signage requirements. They want a little bit taller by one foot, a little taller monument sign than the directional signs, which say enter and exit, they're gonna be a little bit wider than what's allowed by our code, so we can adopt all those standards as part of this whole zoning package for them. They don't have to come back and do a variance in the future, we just include it in this application package. So analyzed the project, again, we've taken a look at it pretty carefully over the last year plus. Again, it's been a mixed-use site since the seventies when the schools first opened up. Started as a religious in the sixties, allowed church uses, I mean, school uses since the mid-seventies. We're just trying to really just legalize what's out there now. Got operational standards, as I touched upon a few minutes ago, that are intended to mitigate any potential impacts. We don't see any impacts occurring because everything's gonna happen away from the residences and closer to the street. Several goals, objectives consistent with, I mean, we're looking to modernize buildings, allow a variety of land uses that meet community needs, so it addresses and complements several goals and objectives of the general plan. And then finally, the whole purpose, again, of this SD tool is to establish land uses and development standards for this specific site, and this is a tool that we use for this project here because it doesn't quite fit in the P-zone box right now. So we're thinking outside that zoning box. And with that, as I mentioned, we did a negative declaration, we had analysis done. Our consultant from Kimbley Horn is here to answer any questions, but there's some mitigation monitoring and reporting issues we gotta take care of, but they're all pretty much standard. There's nothing that was unique about this application. So we got the environmental document for you to recommend the city council approve, and then we have the actual zoning document, the SD ninety-five, that you need your recommendation for approval too, so. With that, that completes my presentation. Again, I've got the church team here who's here this evening. Michael Wells is the one I've been talking to. Adrian Gladson, who you met a few months ago and she came to the presentation on planning commission outreach, representing the church, and then we also have Kimbley Horn, we got Dana Privet who's here as well, so. We've got a full team that can answer any questions that she may have this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Vince. Does the commission have any questions of staff? Cynthia?
I had asked Pastor Michael about the outreach to the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood. How was that received? Did you guys receive any input?
Received one email and I reached out to the lady who did it and I said, please call me. Mr. Wells reached out to her as well. She contacted him directly. They answered the questions, addressed her concerns, and the email that you have in your packet says at the end there, said basically, thank you, I support the church, I support the project. They've answered my questions and I'm good with the proposal. And that's in the correspondence that you have there from Ms. Whitnack? Yes. So, and then we did our normal outreach, five hundred-foot radius. It's not adjacent to any neighborhoods out there. There's no community neighborhoods.
Chairman, very quick question. What the code call for the number of parking space required for thousands for church use?
So the site complies with parking. It actually, in the last few years, it's actually been better. When the project was approved, it was approved for a three thousand-seat auditorium, worship center. That's about almost a thousand parking spaces. About three years ago, two years ago, they downsized it? Seven years ago, sorry. They removed a bunch of seats out of the facility, now it's nineteen hundred seats. So this proposal actually results in a lesser parking requirement than what's out there. So they have about five hundred and sixty on-site. They have agreements they've had in place since the seventies with the surrounding properties. They have over thirteen hundred parking spaces available for the facility there.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this point in time? Thanks, Vince.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any correspondence on this item?
We have and those have been distributed and posted online.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the public hearing at this point in time. Would the applicant like to speak?
Chair and members of the planning commission, it's an honor for all of us to be here. I'm Adrian Gladson. I am pleased to tell you it's fun to be on the other side of the microphone. I'm a retired city planner with the city of Perea. I last visited you in May on the OC policy efforts for planning commissioners and it's an honor for me to be here in front of you as part of my church family. Calvary Church Santa Ana has been working on this project, as Vince shared with you, for about eight years. Our team is here tonight and we took your staff's recommendation to bring forward with this SD zoning, essentially to wrap up our site and set up a master plan to help us with visioning for our future. As Vince and Mr. Fergus has already told you, we look ahead. We are a congregation that's very focused on planning for our future. I'm not gonna jump into some of the things my colleagues want to tell you, but I do want to introduce, behind me to speak to you will be Eric Wakelin, our senior pastor, and Michael Wells, who is our executive pastor. Additionally, Matt Doan is here if you have questions about our outreach efforts and our community outreach in particular. We're very active in Santa Ana. And then last but not least is Tom Matlock, our architect, who's helped us all along the way on the planning side of things. But without further ado, I would like to let our pastor go forward and then the next gentleman. We'll be here to answer any technical questions that you may have, but we're not gonna sell past the clothes. We have, we are pleased that your staff has given a recommendation for approval and this has been a great partnership to be before you this evening.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you, commission. I'm Eric Wakelin, pastor at Calvary Church Santa Ana, and it is a pleasure to be able to be here with you. Thank you for your service. As you know, we've been here in the city for eighty-eight years and we love the city. And so I'm just simply here to say thank you for just the privilege to continue to allow our buildings, our property, to be able to be a service to our people that attend our church regularly, our students, our parents of our school, as well as the way that we can reach out. We really do have a heart to continue to reach out to our community that's gone back all the way when Lauren Gasset, former mayor of Santa Ana, was involved in, he was a part of our church and we were, we had military servicemen during World War II sleeping on our campus back then. We aren't doing that anymore. But, you know, just to be able to care and reach out to our city, as well as even now just doing things like providing backpacks to Santa Ana schoolchildren and school supplies within all of that, serving widows, elderly in need throughout our community with Operation Love, an outreach we do, as well as things like our annual Neighbor Good, which is our way of trying to be a good neighbor to the people around us in our city, where we have an annual event where we do free oil changes, free car washes, free legal advice, haircuts and notary services, bike repair, stuff like that. So we just, we wanna be a church that's also partnering with a lot of the nonprofits in the city, which is something that we have a heart for as well, and even a couple of our pastors serving or have served as chaplains with Santa Ana PD. I'm used to actually being at this mic to give an invocation, not to speak like this during city council meetings. But anyway, we just wanted to share that with you, that we want to continue to use our facility to serve our city, and if the city needs to use it, we've had memorial services for police officers and things like that, and so we want to continue to let our auditorium and our other buildings be a service to the city and not just for the members of our church. So, thank you. That's all I have to share at this point. Michael?
Thank you, Eric.
Alright, just thank you to the planning commission for the valuable work you do here in the city as well. I just wanted to say we've been excited about this planning journey.
Identify who you are.
I'm Michael Wells, executive pastor at Calvary Church. Been excited to be part of this planning journey that was actually kicked off by Jay Trevino from the city encouraging us to think a little bit longer term than one project that was right in front of us. So I've been involved with Vince and staff since the beginning and they've just been really helpful in explaining and helping a layman understand the importance of all of this and so we just appreciate the opportunity to bring it here and I just want to be available to answer any questions on the project.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody have any questions of Michael? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a Tom Matlock?
I'm the architect of the project and just available if you're interested.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have as far as speaker cards go at this point in time. So if there's any other questions that you have at this point, if not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the commission. Any comments from the commission?
Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I'm so glad to see that our city not only it grew in economic and commercial, as well through its spiritual as well. I'm very happy to see the Calvary Church able to be modeling and expand it for the services that are spiritual need of our resident. I would like to make a motion to planning commission to recommend the city council to adopt a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring report program and adopt ordinance approving amendment application number two zero one eight dash nine for specific development numbers ninety-five.
Second.
Second? Okay. Any other comments? I'd just like to say, you know, thank you for everything that you're doing for the community because obviously you've been here a long time and had a lot of impact on the community and the fact that you're wanting to completely revamp and grow what you've got already is just a tremendous opportunity for those that live in Santa Ana and the surrounding area, so we thank you for that. Thank you for providing that service. Any other comments at this point in time? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero with one absence?
Just for the record, they were a big proponents of the annexation as well, because Michael's a big Chick-fil-A fan, so he's gonna send a lot of sales tax dollars in this city now and this congregation will as well, so.
And there was a history lesson there too with Lauren Gasset and, you know, Jay Trevino and Vince is eighty-two years old.
When he said from the beginning, he didn't mean that beginning. I think he meant something like current beginning or most recent.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Okay. So we are going to now have a discussion on the California state laws regarding the updates with the accessory unit, accessory dwelling units, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. An exciting subject to have.
He's hanging out with the bang.
Large crowd here tonight for the presentation.
Hold on to your seats, everybody, you know, here we go. It's yours.
Alright. So tonight, I'd like to share some information related to ADUs, specifically discuss what they are, provide some history on our existing ordinance and how long we've been approving and processing ADU applications here in the city, as well as a summary of the recent bills that were signed by the governor late October that are scheduled to take effect January one, twenty twenty. And also what those changes at the state level are gonna do to our existing ordinance. And ultimately, the goal of the study session tonight is to provide you a summary with those changes to demonstrate how the state has limited our ability to regulate ADUs and moving forward, the changes that are gonna be required to our local ordinance to comply with state law, which we anticipate to bring before you January. So first, what's an ADU? ADUs are accessory dwelling units, also known as second dwelling units, granny flats, casitas, different terms for the same thing. Essentially, it's a secondary unit on a single-family lot. They usually take the form of detached, attached or repurposed spaces. You can see from the image, they could be attached to the rear of a house or attached as a second-story addition to a single-family dwelling, or as a standalone building at the rear, or a conversion of the existing garage, tool shed or similar types of structures on a lot. The new term that has come about recently is junior accessory dwelling units. In the past, they were optional types of units that cities had the option to adopt in ordinance to allow them. And what they are essentially is kind of what the name implies. It's kind of like a junior version of an ADU. They're smaller in size. They don't allow for the same type of kitchen facilities. They can have a shared space or entryway to the primary dwelling unit and they're located within the footprint of a single-family house. So you can see from the graphic, they usually take the form of a master bedroom that's converted into an additional unit. And to give you some background on ADUs here in Santa Ana, we've had an ordinance in place since two thousand and three and that was in response to Assembly Bill that was passed in two thousand and three by the state that was known as the Granny Flat Bill. At that time, the state thought that this was a great way to promote affordable housing throughout the state and they encouraged cities to adopt ordinances that would allow ADUs. Any state that did not adopt an ordinance because it was optional would then be required to implement the state standards that they had in place. So since two thousand and three, the city was applying the state's standards until two thousand and seven, when a host of changes to state law affected the ADU standards that we had in place at that time. And following the changes in two thousand and seventeen, the city went through a pretty thorough community engagement process to arrive at the ADU ordinance that we have in place today. It lasted about a year's time. We approached the CommLink Board, CommLink General Assembly, we had meetings with housing advocacy groups here in the city. We had meetings with the planning commission, subcommittees of the planning commission and also subcommittees of the city council. In addition to that, we were receiving feedback on our website, which ultimately led to an ordinance that was widely accepted by the community and also our elected officials. Alright, here's the fun stuff. So starting October, second week of October, the governor signed a series of bills, five of which are gonna specifically affect the ADU ordinance that we have in place today. The five are listed here. It's Assembly Bill sixty-eight, eight eighty-one, five eighty-seven, six seventy-one and Senate Bill thirteen. Assembly Bill sixty-eight is the bill that requires cities to also adopt an ordinance that allows J-ADUs. Assembly Bill eight eighty-one has a bulk of the changes. It limits, or actually reduces, one of the standards that cities were using to limit ADU construction and that's minimum lot sizes. It does away with the city's ability to require owner occupancy of a house or an ADU. It actually speeds up the process to process an ADU application. In the past, cities had a hundred and twenty days. That's being cut down to sixty days. And also, it sets minimum sizes for ADUs. So if someone would like to propose a one-bedroom ADU, the minimum size that the city could have in its ordinance would be eight hundred and fifty square feet. have in its ordinance would be eight hundred and fifty square feet, and then a thousand square feet for two bedrooms or larger. One of the other big changes is in the past, when there was a garage converted to an ADU, the city would require that those spaces be replaced either in the driveway, carports, or some other type of covered structure on the, on the property or on the driveway and tandem parking spaces. The change moving forward is if a property owner chooses to convert a garage or a carport, the city cannot require that those enclosed parking spaces be replaced. So if, for instance, a property has four parking spaces, two of which are in the garage, someone converts the garage, then they are left with the two spaces, and that's all that they have. Assembly Bill five eight seven, it's, it allows for ADUs to be sold separately from the primary dwelling. So this is only in narrow, narrow cases where nonprofits such as Habitat for Humanity or similar types of developers are associated with the development. They build the house and the ADU, and they work through the city's housing agency to administer a program by which those would be tied in for at least thirty years for affordability. And if the owner were to sell, they would then have to sell to another family that is considered low income. Assembly Bill six seventy-one has a requirement that the cities moving forward include an incentives program in its housing element to incentivize the construction of affordable ADUs. And Senate Bill thirteen creates an avenue by which folks would have an extended period to comply with code enforcement should they have an unpermitted ADU that they're trying to legalize. They would request that through our code enforcement division, and they would have up to five years to bring the building into compliance. So created this matrix here to demonstrate to you all which are the major changes that are coming forward from the state and where it conflicts with our existing ordinance. So for instance, we currently require or only allow, I should say, ADUs be constructed on properties with a single-family residence. Moving forward, the state requires that cities adopt an ordinance that would allow them not only on properties with single-family dwellings, but also on properties with multifamily dwellings. In addition to that, like I mentioned before, J-ADUs would also be allowed. So in theory, someone would be able to construct or have a single-family house, construct an ADU, and also have a J-ADU resulting in a property with three units. Like I mentioned before as well, they've struck down our ability to require a minimum lot size. So any existing lot that has a single-family dwelling would also be able to have an ADU on it as well. Some of our other development standards that we apply, such as lot coverage, we wouldn't be able to apply those standards if it would preclude a property owner's ability to construct at least an eight hundred square foot ADU. So in essence, it would give a property owner a variance from that lot coverage standard to construct at least an ADU. They'd be able to exceed the maximum lot coverage standard. And the last and one of the biggest items here, I would say, especially with some of our communities being impacted with off-street parking, is what I just mentioned before, the requirement, or I should say, the prohibition of, of the state not allowing the city to require off-street parking be replaced in instances when garages are converted. So what we are planning on doing is bringing before you all in early next year in January, a revised ordinance that complies with the state law so that we can have a local ordinance that complies not only with state law, but is informed by our local conditions and maintains our neighborhood character, which was the intent of the twenty eighteen AD ordinance that went through that extended vetting, vetting period. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
The, I believe the state law will allow the maximum size of the ADUs is a one thousand square foot. What is our local ordinance for that maximum size for ADU we allow out city?
Currently, it's seven hundred and fifty square feet or fifty percent the size of the existing residence. Whichever of those two is less.
And my second, the second question is, is the J-ADU, it's mean the resident convert existing space in the res, in the home or to be attached? Like, for example, they convert their patio into like a living space. Is that requ, and also, does that require a bathroom facility or something?
It wouldn't, it would, a J-ADU would be a conversion of existing habitable space, such as like a master bedroom or a portion of the home. And it can have shared sanitation facilities. So like in the graphic, it shows may have interior access. So the unit may have a door leading into the house so that the person living in the J-ADU can access a shared bathroom with the, the home.
So the conversion of the garage could cause consider a J-ADU, is it in it?
Conversion of a garage would be considered a ADU.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got, I've got one, Mike.
Sure.
We brought this up the last time we had the presentation in two thousand and seventeen, and that is, is that I think that between the two thousand and three and two thousand and seventeen, there were like twenty-seven permits that were issued for ADUs at that point in time, or granny flats that everybody used to call them.
Mm-hmm.
And now from two thousand and seventeen till today, do we have any idea of how many permits have been issued at this point in time?
All right. So here's a table I prepared in case this question came up, and it shows there.
Son of a gun. He got me on that.
So you can see there, the, the low tallies.
Where was that in the presentation here?
Oh, that one, it's not on there. This is a... So you can see there, the giant spike when that change came about in two thousand and seventeen. And the three bars show applications that we've received compared to applications that have been approved by the planning commission. And the third would be permit, permits that have been finalled. So folks that have gone through the process and been able to construct the, the ADU.
How many do you believe are out there that were not permitted at all?
Where's my next one?
No, go, you got it.
I'm not sure.
It's your question.
It's, you know, like, you don't know what you don't know. So we don't know that they're out there, so we wouldn't be able to tally something like that. But having spent a considerable amount of time at the counter fielding questions from folks coming in from code enforcement, sending them notices of violation because ADU, illegal construction or conversions, my assumption is that they're a lot.
And with the new, the new laws in place, that in January, we now have a year to complete people, were those unpermitted ADUs?
From certain codes, correct.
So is there any kind of plan? I mean, I think there was, so to speak, a informal activity that was going on from the planning department and code enforcement to go around and look at some of these and see how they could be converted into legitimate ADUs and things of that nature. Is there any strategy that we're doing at this point in time, moving forward?
In terms of, in terms of...
I mean, to go back to what Norma's bringing up, and, and that is, is that, you know, how many of the units that are out there are not permitted? I mean, and there's a lot. I mean, a lot is a big statement, but I mean, it's more than a couple of hundred. It's probably close to like a thousand units that are throughout the city that have never been permitted. And, you know, do, do we have a plan to go back on those facilities and say, look, you comply here, you have to get a permit and take, you know, pay for a permit, do the thing, and then it become legitimate? Or are we just going to ignore everything that's been done up until two thousand and seventeen and say, okay, well, we just take care of it moving forward?
I think that's one thing that we can consider to look at is at least the ones that have applied for in the past. That's something we, we may consider reaching out, indicating the state has provided additional changes that you may now qualify. But for the most part, our goal is to provide the public information and leave it up to the public to come in and request for the ADU. I would venture to say that most that are illegal, non-permitted at this point, from the experience in terms of how they were subdivided, a very small percentage actually could become legalized. But many homes has been subdivided to more than just one or two ADUs. And that's where we see a lot of issues of parking, overcrowding. And in those cases, we will come and, and enforce based upon when, when we have, when we have, what do you call it, a complaint base, and we would come and investigate. But in terms of legalizing, I think our goal is to be able to provide information to the public. The number of units, I would ask, I, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
In terms of the application, and then also the plan approved, do we know why some of the units were not approved? Is it because they didn't meet our code requirements? They didn't have standards?
So some of them might still be in plan check. Some of the applications may have been withdrawn, or some of the applications, there may just be a lag going from application submitted to planning approving, approving the application to then the building being constructed. So my guess would be if we were to do the same graph in two years, you would start to see a tapering off of some of the applications, planning approvals, and then an increase of the building permits catching up to those as time progresses.
And I, I think there is, have we looked at how the multifamily aspect of this regulation potentially impact housing for multifamily properties?
Yeah, so like I was mentioning, one of the big changes would be that ADUs would not just be allowed in single-family properties or zones, but also on multifamily. And they would be allowed to construct up to twenty-five percent the number of units that are at the site. So if someone has an apartment complex with one hundred units, they'd be able to construct twenty-five ADUs, and that would be of conversion of existing building space that's not used for habitable space. So say, for instance, they have, I don't know, a hundred storage rooms, they'd be able to convert twenty-five of those.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
So as you can see, the new regulation significantly reduces the threshold for increasing the number of units to the existing housing stock. And as you can understand, the existing housing stock in development did not anticipate the additional infrastructure that would require to accommodate these types of additional pressure into our sewer system or water providing system, but it is something that we have to deal with. So, you know, it's something that we are going to evaluate, what we need to do to, in the drafting of the ordinance. But from my understanding is that there's not a whole lot that we can do.
That's right.
No, but I mean, I mean, you know, the, the tough thing is, is that like one of my neighbors, Julie Humphries, just came up to me not too long ago, and she was very happy with the support she got from the planning department. And she just actually, like last week, I think, moved her father and mother, who were in their eighties, into the ADU that she built in the back of the, of her house. But she went through the planning process, got the permits, got everything taken care of, did the setbacks, did everything that needed to be done, and, you know, satisfied customer, great. But if we are not doing that or enforcing that on a regular basis across the city, I think we're just, you know, we're compounding the problem that we already know that exists today, and that is lack of parking, lack of...
Right. So this won't change the enforcement per se, but it will make it easier for property owners to come and legalize what they have is potentially something that's not legal. So it, in cases where we identify properties, it may make it easier and more expedited for the property owner to obtain legalization and reduce the amount of code enforcement. It won't change a code enforcement of ADU per se because it doesn't, you know...
Right.
Right. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm just, but I'm just, what I'm asking for is some formality that's going to be existing between the planning department and code enforcement to, as we move forward, to continue to bring more facilities into code. Because, I mean, it's not just, it's not just the, them that are getting the permits and those that are not getting the permits. There's also, from my perspective, there's a safety factor that's brought into play.
Correct.
Because a lot of these places that are being built without permits are probably substandard construction and, and have some issues with respect to how they've been wired or, or, you know...
Absolutely.
Put together. And so the more we have control over that, even though we have no control over ADUs as a, as an entity, the more control we have over it from a, from a process point of view should provide us with a better and safer environment, not just for that house, but for the, for the neighborhood and everything else.
Right. And the avenue that we have is staff to really do those type of outreach to the community at that level. We fortunately has the support of Neighborhood Improvement Program staff that has a very close knit with each one of the neighborhood. And that would be a good way to do outreach and also education on bringing ADU into compliance.
Okay.
And, and that's something that we can explore as well.
Okay. So we actually, just to add to that, Min, two items, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Two items I'd like to add to that. The first, as part of, or once, I should say, the new local ordinance is adopted, staff has discussed coming up with like a brochure, informational brochure, where we'd go out to neighborhood association meetings to share this updated information so that these more lax standards are available to the public, and they are aware that they can potentially come in and try to legalize some of these unpermitted buildings and not be afraid that if they come into the city, there's going to be some kind of enforcement action when they come in immediately. The second item, as part of SB two, the city was awarded a grant, and one of the items as part of the grant monies that we're looking into is adopting or looking into a pre-approved ADU plan. So this would be a plan that has been reviewed by the planning department for consistency with our local ordinance, design guidelines, consistency with the overall neighborhood, and then also has been pre-reviewed and approved by our building department by which it would make it easier for folks to come in and then get a permit instead of looking at our system as being too cumbersome and expensive, and then just doing the unpermitted route.
You just answered my question. The second item you mentioned was how are we going to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood? You know, because we don't want monstrosities all of a sudden looming over, you know, single-family homes and sort of, so I'm glad that, that's being looked at.
And in addition to that, we would still be implementing our citywide design guidelines, which would look at things like that.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Great. Thank you.
You see, this said in January, Chairman.
Pardon?
Go back to your formal recommendation in January. There'll be a couple of other code modifications you can get with it, but just to read the meat of what you see next year.
I think the other thing I'd like to just suggest is that we haven't done it in about probably three or four months, but maybe the two of you can maybe get to the Santa Ana Chamber GAC meeting that we had. Remember, we, we did that about six months ago. I think it would be good to present this at the GAC meeting because it is, you know, that's the Government Affairs Council for the Chamber, and there's a lot of people that are participating in that that are involved in housing and things of that nature. I mean, the vice chair of that council is the CEO of Habitat for Humanity, so she's, she's very involved in that. So I think that'd be good to have that kind of, you know, review with the GAC. And I think maybe some of the, maybe the review of projects and things like that.
Sure. But it's not one of the things we'll...
Yeah. I'll give you the dates on that, dates and times. It's noon time. It's the second Tuesday of the month usually, but I'll verify that for sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Does staff have any comments at this point in time that you'd like to cover?
Publicly welcome our new commissioner, Nora Garcia, to the commission. I look forward to working with you. As this is the last meeting of the year, I would like to say thank you for your support and guidance over the last twelve months. Had a lot of controversial project, but we got through it. And I look forward to working with you next year again, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Thanks, man. Vince?
I repeat, whatever Min said, I totally agree. So thank you. Welcome. And just one little note, there will be no meeting on January thirteenth, so our next meeting will be January twenty-seventh.
Okay. Good enough? All right. Ken?
This would likely welcome, Norma, to the commission, looking forward to work with you. And just want to wish everybody have Merry Christmas and happy year.
Thank you. Cynthia?
I just want to say me and Felix had a moment up here when we saw this calendar. We were super impressed. Thank you. It's great to be able to plan out already through the end of the year. Was that Sarah? See, Sarah, that's why.
That's why you got the gift.
That's why you got what you got.
Wasn't Vince's idea.
Again, poor Vince.
This, again, poor Vince. But we really appreciate even the little things like this, so thank you, once again, thank you for all of your support and continuous help in trying to understand what we're supposed to do up here sometimes, and a happy holidays to you guys and your family, and welcome Norma.
Felix?
Same, I'd like to welcome Norma to the commission, and then also thanks everybody for, really, I mean, within this year, getting me up to speed, I guess, with some of the things, and still kind of learning a lot of stuff, but thanks for the guidance and all the help, and obviously all the planning stuff that we're taking care of, like the calendars she's talking about, but, yeah, happy holidays, and that should be it.
Hello?
I will turn on the, the microphone for the first time tonight, thank you Vince, I survived, thank you all for the warm welcome, I'm looking forward to working with each of you in two thousand and twenty, at least until Vince gets turned out, so thank you, and happy holidays, if I didn't already say that.
Commissioner Norma, we'd like to add, you just passed the first test by the chairman with the. You should have.
That's okay, wait a minute, really, the fact is, is that, you know, I know you had a little trouble with the President, Pledge Allegiance of the City, but in January, usually what we do is we do the National Anthem, so we'll expect you to sing the National Anthem for us, okay? Is that, oh gosh, I can't believe that, anyway, no, but welcome, and we appreciate you joining us, and we're glad that you've joined us, because it's been a challenge for us, and as Cynthia pointed out, she now can take a few nights off and not have to worry about quorum, but we, we, I, you know, I think one thing that we'd like to do as we move into next year is that, you know, if there's anything that you think you need, I mean, we, we've tried to bring up people to come on new and, you know, get them involved in some activities, if there's something you see or you'd like to see us do as a group, from a presentation point of view, you know, anybody, we step up and say something like that. I think that, you know, we've talked about when the new person comes on board this month coming, at the end of this month, we'll have a full commission, and hopefully we'll have some small workshops that, you know, we can talk about at the end of the meeting that cover items that are maybe areas that you'd like to get some insight on how and what we're doing with regards to planning commission decision-making and processes like that. So, anyway, welcome aboard, go ahead Cynthia.
I just want to say one more thing, I want to say thank you to you for your leadership and for getting us through some long nights, and just, just thank you, you're, you're great up here, so, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anyway, with that, happy holidays to everybody, Min?
Uh, just one last note.
Everybody's jumping in here for the last.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Garcia.
We're going to go around the table one more time.
Our city attorney's office will be reaching out to you to provide some information, and thank you for reminding me actually on Brown Act issue and also ethics, we'll provide you some information, and we'll reach out and set up a meeting on that, so.
And I think there's some commission, there's some commission meetings coming up in the spring that also cover the Brown Act too, from that standpoint, right?
Correct.
Sure, yeah.
That would be helpful, thanks.
Yeah, no, there's a couple of things, that's good. All right, with that, the meeting's adjourned till January twenty-seventh, and happy holidays everybody, have a safe holidays, and we'll see you after many years, and Norma will have that National Anthem nailed.